Everyone, welcome to beautiful downtown Grand Forks. This is the time and place for the Grand Forks Growth Fund, which is the name of our city's jobs development authority. I'll begin with roll call, please.
Weigel.
Here.
Osowski.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Blansky.
Here.
Cavami.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
Veen.
Here.
Mayor Bocinski.
Here.
We have a form.
Very good, thanks. Action item 2.1, Business Park Lot Sale.
Thank you, Chair Weber. I just quickly wanted to kind of orient everybody as to where the business park is at. Here's I-29, hopefully this is on your display. I-29 is over here, here's 32nd Avenue South. The business park land is up here. We purchased the land in about 2012. This infrastructure here was put in in about 2018. We've had a few sales since then, and the lots that are interested are in this location here, the intersection of 28th and 48th. And I'll pull up the plat that was in our staff report. So, the interested party is interested as well in sharing and actually picking up the land here that comes in off of South 48th Street, the direct access. So, we'll, part of this approval is an agreement for us to plat that property, expand it about 10,000 square feet from 130 to 140,000 square feet. And they're interested in doing some warehousing on the site and some display for the materials that they'll be selling. It does fit the plan that we've had in this location. We do have this in a planned unit development, and their proposal does match that as well. One of the things that did come up at the growth fund was a request that they do build within a year. We did say that we would work with the city attorney on getting that put into the purchase agreement as well, and the applicant was agreeable to that as well. They want to get started building right away in the spring. With that, I hopefully have covered everything and can stand for any questions.
Very good. Let me go ahead and open a public hearing on this. Does anyone wish to speak to this matter? Anything? Nothing? Not tonight? Then we'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions? President Sandy, we have a motion to approve, second from Representative Osowski. Any further questions or comments? I have one quick one, the small section of land. So, would the city have been responsible for that if they didn't want to take that on?
Yeah, that would be on our property. We would be needing to do our maintenance on that and improve that roadway when needed.
And instead, they're buying that, so we're bumping the sale, and they'll be taking care of the maintenance.
Correct, and we'll retain an easement to get access to the lift station.
Very good. If there's nothing else, then, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes. Looking for a motion to adjourn. Representative Osowski, second from Representative Weigel, meeting is adjourned. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, we'll keep rolling here. We'll call to order the Grand Forks City Council meeting for Monday, November 7, 2022. Welcome, and roll call, please, Marine.
Weigel.
Here.
Osowski.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Blansky.
Here.
Cavami.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
And Veen.
Here.
We have a form.
All right, item 1.2, Pledge of Allegiance. So, we're going to need Ms. Moore's class back for the second year to come on up here and lead us tonight, 4th grade class. Now, we're going to get to hear just a little bit from each of the kids. They're going to get to practice some of their public speaking here, so, Ms. Moore, take it away.
One of the big kids. Hi, as Mayor Bocinski said, I'm Trish Moore. I've been teaching at Holy Family since 1980, so a lot of you look really familiar to me, and I just want to say thank you for your service to our great community of Grand Forks. We talk a lot about rights and responsibilities in the classroom, in the society that we live in, in our world, and I think that this is such an honor for us to come and share in this evening with you. So, thank you for your service again, and we're excited to be here.
Hi, I'm...
Pull the mics down for them. Can they hear? Okay. All right, go ahead, sir.
I like to play baseball, shortstop.
Oh, nice.
Hi, I'm Hudson, and my favorite sport is hockey, and my favorite position is defense.
Hi, my name's Will Hawn, and I like basketball, and my favorite position is defense, and my favorite subject in school is math.
Hi, I'm Carson. I like playing with my friends, like, I like when we have sleepovers.
Hi, my name's Trajan. I like swimming a lot.
Hi, I'm Emma. I like playing soccer as a defender.
Hi, I'm Oliver. I really like playing tennis, and solo's my game.
Hi, I'm Nora. I like basketball. My favorite position is a forward.
All right, well done. Well done, Ms. Moore's class. I got to be a mystery reader there on Friday, and we did a dry run on this, and they were a lot better this time around, so, well done, kiddos. All right, we've got a few announcements for tonight, and I apologize for the room. It is a little chilly in here tonight, and that's probably a sign of things to come, because we're going to have some bad weather coming through the next few days. With that, I know the crews are finishing up their third and final pass on the leaf collection, so, if you feel like you've gotten missed, or you've got a spot that hasn't been picked up, please go to the 311 app or call into the city and let them know. Otherwise, I want to give a huge thank you to the public works and that whole team that undertook that for three whole weeks, so, I think they did a good job, so, want to give them a thank you. One exciting bit of news, we got a letter last week on Friday that the city was approved for grant funding under the Urban Grant Program, which is going to be paying 81% of a project on 5th Street in Belmont. I know that's been an intersection, it's been a problem intersection for a long time. This is going to cover 81% of the cost on that, so you'll see that, we'll have to accept that grant coming up at the committee of the whole and the council the next couple of weeks. But another positive, and seeing that cost spread out, it's definitely great. It's been a little while, we haven't had a meeting in a while, so there's a couple other events. The North Dakota Mill celebrated their 100th anniversary, which is pretty phenomenal, thinking of that trajectory over the last 100 years, now the biggest single standing mill in the, I believe, in the western hemisphere. I think it was in North America and nearly in the world, so that's phenomenal. The city did also receive, on behalf of the Children's Museum Board, a grant to continue to develop a children's museum in Grand Forks here, which I think is another great asset, and that project continues to move along well, so give some thanks to that Children's Museum, the Center for Exploration Board, they've been taking the reins on this one and working really hard, so if you see one of them, give them a thank you. Other than that, the governor was in town for Recovery Reinvented. There was more than 2,000 people that showed up for that, a great event that builds that recovery community and positive outcomes, and it was great to see about 800 people in person there on Thursday at the Alara Center. So, lots going on, that's all I've got for Mayor's announcements today. Move on to two citizen comments.
Okay, I have one, Roland Reimers.
Mr. Reimers, please, sir.
Thank you, pleasure to see the city council again. I'm Roland Reimers, 1024 University Avenue, and I just wanted to give you an update a little bit on the train situation. I was here at the last council meeting, and I reported in September, I had reported to the police three train blockages in Grand Forks extending for an extreme amount of time, and nothing was ever done by the police department. Well, following that council meeting on the 10th of October, I'm sure you've probably already read the newspaper, there was a confrontation between me, the railroad, and most of the Grand Forks Police Department on the 5,400 block of Demers, and the final result with that was, one, the train engineer was not cited under our ordinance, and, two, I was arrested for disorderly conduct. In fact, I go through a court hearing on that this coming Thursday in district court, and I request a jury trial on that, so that's going to be interesting to see how you hold someone for disorderly conduct when you're just exercising your rights as a citizen of the state of North Dakota. But, in reviewing the information, we did find out that our current ordinance and state law is actually illegal. Trains are regulated by federal law. We have no choice on that, so therefore I would request that the city council consider just deleting the city ordinance 8-1002 completely off the books, because you can't enforce it, there's no sense having it be there, and just default to the state and let the state defend their law. If we do have to enforce blockages of streets, there is a other ordinance, interestingly, let's see what we got here, 9-0107-5 obstructional traffic, which doesn't mention the railroad, so therefore might actually be constitutional and legal to enforce. So, we still have an option there, but it'd be kind of, it depends on how good your attorney is. But, interestingly, I do time when I go drive around Grand Forks and I see a train stop in an intersection, I will time it on time, and so I have been kind of keeping track, and interestingly, the trains have taken notice, they have improved. The last time I timed a train about a week ago on 42nd, it was eight minutes, and so, I haven't seen any trains since then exceeding these extended periods of time, so they have been improving, and I hope they continue to improve. My recommendations as well as a repeal of 8-102, though, is also that maybe, you know, trains are here to stay forever. Maybe what we need to do is have a small committee in Grand Forks made up of representatives of the city council, maybe a representative from the fire department for emergency services, and from the railroad. To talk about these problems like, you know, train crossings and blockages and excess noise, how can we live with the trains a little bit more easier than we can instead of having a confrontation all the time? And finally, I'd like to mention, too, that this whole thing kind of brought my attention to the conduct of the Grand Forks Police Station. I have handed out the information, and in fact, it resulted in me making a complaint with the Grand Forks Police Department because of their conduct during this whole situation. During my arrest at the site, Lieutenant Love walked up to me, violently grabbed my hand, threw it behind my back, announcing I was under arrest for disorderly conduct. I have a shoulder replacement on my one side, he could have seriously injured me. This is contrary to the policy manual from the Grand Forks Police Station, which they don't seem to follow. When I tried to question Lieutenant Love about the reason for my arrest, I was threatened with further arrest for resisting arrest. Now, how can asking a question of a police officer be resisting an arrest? I think this type of behavior should not be tolerated on any police department, and especially in Grand Forks. I tried to bring this, these questions up to the chief of the department, Mark Nelson. He hasn't answered any of my emails. I tried calling him, he won't answer, respond to a phone call, trying to set up an appointment to talk to him about this situation. So, I think the city councils will probably do a little bit more review of the actions of the police department. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Reimers.
There's copies of this report, by the way, at the back table.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to item 3, awards, presentations, appointments, and proclamations. There are none this evening, so we'll move on to 4, public hearings and second reading of ordinances.
4.1 is a public hearing and second reading of an ordinance amending City Code 8-0816 Subsection 2 as it relates to daily parking restrictions.
All right, we'll open the public hearing. Anybody here to speak on item 4.1? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public portion. Do we have any issues, any remaining ones on the second time around on this ordinance, or we'll be looking for a motion to approve? So moved. Got a motion approved from Mr. Weigel, and a second from Ms. Osowski. Seeing no further conversation, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously. All right, moving on to 5, action items. I know we need to pull 5.0, 5.1, we should pull 5.2, 5.3, 5.4. 510, then if anybody wants to, 511, yeah, perfect. So, look for a motion, then, to move on the remaining items, which would be 5.5, 5.6, 5.7, 5.8, and 5.9. Motion, we got a motion approved from President Sandy. Do we have a second? Got a second from Mr. Weigel. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously on 5.0.
5.0, approve retaining DeCello Levitt LLC to represent city with opioid-based litigation against McKinsey &amp; Company, Inc., similar to action brought for Cass County, North Dakota, and the attached complaint is, it is attached.
All right, I'm going to hand this over to Mr. Gostad. I know we initially thought we may need executive session, but from attorneys now, it doesn't seem like we're going to need to, so let's just continue in orderly manner.
Yep, this is, as noted, it's a request for the city to be engaged in further litigation on the opioid matter. This is against McKinsey &amp; Company, Inc., similar to the litigation that was commenced last week by Cass County. This came through Roxanna Pierce, who's already assisting the city on some of those matters, and through Bruce Bernstein with the law firm of, and I don't know if I'm pronouncing this right, DeCello Levitt LLC. And I will let Mr. Bernstein explain the reasoning for this and some of the matters with respect to the litigation and what it may mean for the city as far as costs and expenses, things like that.
Thank you. I'll actually initially defer to my partner, Adam Levitt, who's one of the founders of the firm, and has been very involved in these matters, so I'll start, let him start.
Thank you, Bruce. How are y'all? I'm Adam Levitt, and with me, in addition to my partner, Bruce Bernstein, and Roxanna, who you all know, is our partner, Deandra DeBrod Zimmerman. She's actually in transit right now, she'll be on video as fast as possible. Everyone refers to her as Foo, she could explain why. Foo and I co-head our firm's public client practice, and I'm, as Bruce said, a co-founder of our firm. If you'd like, I could tell you a little bit, and one other thing also, as I say very often when I speak at events and at hearings like this, as you'll probably see if you haven't seen already, I occasionally stutter when I speak. It's not a problem for me, it shouldn't be for any of you. If anything I say isn't 100% clear, please let me know, and I'll go right back over it. Want to be really clear, this is really important for your city, it's important, and it's important litigation, and I want to make sure everything's 100% clear. So, let me tell you a little bit about our firm and why we think we're the right choice for you to work with on this case, just real quick, and then we'll get into the substance of the case. Our firm, DeCello Levitt, is a 60-lawyer firm in five cities across the United States. We were founded about five and a half years ago, we've expanded our size 500% since that time, leading some of the largest cases in the United States. I do an awful lot of public client litigation, as does Foo, as does Bruce. We represent states in a number of matters, for example, including, just by way of example, the states of Illinois and Michigan in the PFAS water contamination litigation, the state of New Mexico in a variety of lawsuits, where we've achieved wildly outsized results compared to other settlements, and we represent 40 or 50 cities and counties in the opioids litigation and other matters. So, this is an area where we spend an awful lot of time, it's a space in which we're all really comfortable, we understand the importance of not overburdening a public client in light of the stretched resources that happen a lot of the time, and it's something that we really enjoy working with, the public clients and public entities, in what we think is really important litigation, and we think this is really important litigation. I think that the difference, the primary difference, as you've probably seen, if you've seen the Cass County complaint that we filed, is that here, unlike the larger opioids action, here we're simply suing, or do be suing, the consulting company, McKinsey &amp; Company, and they were hired by Purdue Pharma, for example, and they played a central role in creating the opioid epidemic. McKinsey Company, as you've probably seen, they formulated and led and implemented a successful marketing campaign for promoting oxycontin, and which obviously became a huge problem across the country. And one of the things that happened, so, and it gets even worse, not only were they instrumental in formulating and implementing this marketing program, they also had an in-house investment fund, an in-house hedge fund of their own, where they invested on the other side of this. So, not only did they lie, but they profited both on the front end by getting huge consulting fees for creating a lie, and also, also, investment profits on the back end by investing in the lie. So, it's not, it's not a good look for them, and they're in a hard place. Now, they've already, as you probably know, earlier last year, in February of 2021, McKinsey Company entered into a settlement with state AGs of 47 states for $573 million. Now, of that, only a very small piece of that on the state level is even going to the state of North Dakota, approximately 1.75 million of that is going to the state of North Dakota, and none of it is specifically earmarked to go to the counties or cities like yourselves. So, one of the interesting things here is that unlike in the broader opioids litigation, the fact is that here, because the state AGs are out of the way at this point, because of their own settlement, the cities and counties have a clear shot and a clean shot to assert their own claims without a fear, one would hope, of getting rolled, to use an informal term, by the state AGs. They could actually go forward and assert their own claims. And so, we can talk about the types of claims, but including, for example, a public nuisance claim, negligence claim, a North Dakota deceptive trade practice claim. The bottom line is that this is an opportunity for your city to get involved in a litigation, the topic of which you're already extraordinarily familiar with, and I think that that helps, because one of the things I know that you did in the underlying or the separate opioids litigation was fill out a plaintiff's fact sheet. So, you've already done a lot of the work that's going to have to happen here as well. So, I think you've already, since we just finished the World Series, I mean, you're essentially starting on second base on the way to third. You've got a running start into a stand-up triple at this point. So, I think you're in pretty good shape in terms of where you stand work-wise. I know that was one of the concerns, how much involvement, how much work you would have to do. Unlike a lot of other cases where you'd have to start from square one, I think here, you would be in a very good place at this point, in terms of the amount of work you would have to do. And I understand that the second question you wanted to know about is how the expenses work. Just like in opioids, we would seek to represent you on a fully contingent basis, meaning we front all costs, we front all expenses, we front all fees. If we lose, that's not your problem, which I always say to people, it falls into that great category of not your problem, it's our problem. We believe in the case, based on your experience in the opioids litigation, I'd like to think you all have a high opinion of this sort of case as well, and I think one of the reasons why it's important to get involved now, like Cass County and others have gotten involved, is because there is a possibility of settlements coming down the pike relatively soon, and I think there was an announcement, I think, I know there was an announcement recently of a proposed settlement for a number of cities and counties in the multi-district litigation, and I think this is the right time for your city to get involved. So, with that, unless you have any questions, I'll turn it over to my partners, Foo and Bruce.
I'll just say, just to echo what Adam said about the recent announcement of this agreement in principle with respect to a prospective settlement, our concern would be the timing, that those local governments that are not on file at the time that this agreement in principle is presented to the court in paper could be potentially shut out, and that's what our big concern is with respect to the timing. And, you know, we're not trying to put pressure on you, but we, you know, do want to provide you with the information, you know, that's necessary to make, you know, we think, to make a decision about going forward. So, you know, we don't see really any risks, especially given what Adam described as being, you know, are being responsible for the costs unless, you know, there's a resolution in your favor. But, you know, there's money that obviously the city, we believe, would be entitled to, given the claims involved, and, you know, makes all the sense in the world to be on file.
I'll just wrap it. Good evening, everyone. I apologize for being in my car. My eight-year-old has determined that I have to be here, so I apologize to everyone who's all been there, but thank you all for taking the time to speak with us, and I think to wrap up, what my partners have said, and we're lucky to work with Roxanna, you've spent a lot of time dealing with opiates in general. This is a separate case with a separate defendant, but you're not looking at all of the years that you've spent in opiates. I think I was with Roxanna pretty early on in this litigation, we've aged a bit in it, me more than Roxanna, but there is a settlement pending on the table, and, you know, I think the city should benefit from the city that's on the table in light of everything, in light of everything that's occurred, and we're happy to answer any questions you have about this separate litigation. Again, it's separate from the first opiate litigation and the proposed settlement that's on the table, and anything that you'd be required to do. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'll hand it back over to Mr. Gostad, and if anyone has any questions on that, why don't you wrap up, give us a summary here of what we're looking for today, Mr. Gostad?
Sure. What you're, what they're asking is that we approve retaining DeCello and Levitt LLC to commence the action, and maybe I, just one question, the complaint that was attached from Cass County, the allegations and the, within that complaint are going to be very similar, if not identical, to the complaint the city would have for City of Grand Forks?
Yes, that's correct.
And I'll also add that, my screen just, sorry, my screen just went blank for a second. The city of Fargo filed, in addition to the county, to Cass County, so I just wanted you to note that point.
And I think the, what they're explaining is, it's kind of important that the city pursue this at this point in order to participate in what appears to be an imminent settlement. you've spent a lot of time dealing with opiates in general. This is a separate case with a separate defendant, but you're not looking at all of the years that you've spent in opiates. I think I was with Roxanna pretty early on in this litigation. We've aged a bit in it, me more than Roxanna, but there is a settlement pending on the table. And, you know, I think the city should benefit from the city that's on the table in light that everything, in light of everything that's occurred. And we're happy to answer any questions you have about this separate litigation. Again, it's separate from the first opiate litigation and the proposed settlement that's on the table and anything that you'd be required to do. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'll hand it back over to Mr. Gostad, and if anyone has any questions on that. Why don't you wrap up, give us a summary here of what we're looking for today, Mr. Gostad?
Sure. What you're, what they're asking is that we approve retaining Tichello and Levitt LLC to commence the action. And maybe I, just one question, the complaint that was attached from Cass County, the allegations and the, within that complaint are going to be very similar, if not identical, to the, to the complaint the city would have in, for city grant force?
Yes, that's correct.
And I'll also add that my screen just, sorry, my screen just went blank for a second. The city of Fargo filed, in addition to the county, to Cass County. So I just wanted you to note that point.
And I think the, what they're explaining is it's kind of important that the city pursue this at this point in order to participate in what appears to be an imminent settlement with respect to the McKinsey and Company case. And so in order to be able to participate, you gotta, you gotta have commenced the action. And so to retain this law firm, to do so, is what's being asked to be approved. It's on a contingency basis. They've already talked about the fees and costs, that they, they fund those. And so the risk here is fairly small as far as the financial risk for the city.
All right. Any questions, Mr. Weber, or are you ready?
Sure. Mr. Gostad, the, it always raises an eyebrow for me when I'm told I'm not being pressured to do something, although the timing seems like it makes sense. The, the amount that seems likely to be gained from this action is a fraction of what we'd originally been considering, and I think it's a fraction of the expense incurred by our community, which is hard to put a dollar amount on. But if we move forward, and this is successful or not, does it prohibit us from any future action that might come up?
Well, with respect to McKinsey and Company, it would, because this would be the, this would be the action that you'd be bringing against that particular entity. Now, if there are others, I suppose there's, there'd be other claims, but with respect to McKinsey, this is your opportunity to bring the claim at this point, as I understand it.
There was already action against Purdue. That's been settled. We're getting a, well, we may not get anything from that as a city, is that right?
I don't know the dollar amounts. We've received some dollars in settlement, but it's been less than $50,000, as I understand.
That's correct. Councilman Weber, Mayor, members of City Council, we've received so far two different settlements that total $32,632.
Could I, could I say something about that?
Please.
So, so, hi, I'm Roxanna, and I'm with Robins Geller, and we represent you, we call it opiates one. So you've received year one and year two payments so far, and there is, I think, with the present four defendants that have settled, there's another 13 years of payments coming your way. We just settled with the two pharmaceutical companies and a third one coming, the announcement, it's public already, but I don't have the details to share with you. So there are three more settlements that you'll benefit from. And then we have also registered your claims in two bankruptcies, Purdue and Endo. So there'll be more funds coming from that as well.
I know, I know, Mr. Doolits, this year we might not ask you to come up, but I know you've found, you know, good ways to kind of help this problem and ways to get people in recovery and prevention, so appreciate your work on that. Any other questions?
I have a question, Mr. Gostad. You said that the financial risk was small. What is that risk?
Well, it's a contingency fee, so unless they, they can, they get, the lawyers that would be retained get paid only when there's a settlement, or if there's, you know, if it's litigated and there's a judgment and there's funds being. So there isn't any fees that you pay the law firm in that contingency fee? And the way they've described it is the costs and expenses, because there are costs and expenses that are incurred for litigation. They cover those costs and expenses, and as explained, if they're not successful in the settlement, they absorb, the law firm absorbs those costs and expenses.
So there's no risk, then, financial risk?
There isn't, that I can say.
Okay, thank you.
Other than the time and cost of employees and having to assist the lawyers, there'll be some time and cost for that, but employee time.
Thank you.
And your recommendation is that we move forward with this, and we're looking for a motion to do so, is that correct?
Yes, and the recommendation, the motion is to retain Tichello and Levitt LLC to pursue this litigation against McKinsey and Company.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it with a question.
Got a motion, and we've got a second? Yeah, Mr. Weigle, please continue.
Mr. Gostad, is there a, not downplaying this firm's ability to successfully represent us, is there any other firms that we may be better suited by working with?
Not that I'm aware of, and this came through Roxanna Pierce as well, and I have some confidence in her ability and her recommendation in moving this forward, so.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any further comment? All right, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Moving on to 5.1, resolutions awarding the sale and directing the issuance of two bond issues. The first is refunding improvement bond 2022A, and the second is a sanitation reserve revenue bond 2022B.
All right, I know we got a Mr. Steenman, Steinman, excuse me, Mr. Steinman as well from Baker Tilly. Do you want to start, Ms. Storsted, and you can pass it along to him?
I certainly can, Mayor, members of City Council. Just to start this off, we do have attached resolutions awarding the sale of these two bond issues that have previously been approved for issuance. We, I did send an email out, we had a very strong bond rating from Moody's. We were able to maintain our AA2 rating with a stable outlook. There was good interest in our bonds that we saw today with multiple bidders on those. And we do have Mr. Paul Steinman here, he's from Baker Tilly with us tonight. He's going to go through the results of those bids.
All right, Mr. Steinman, please.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So we sold your 2022As and 2022Bs this morning, and I'll take them in that sequence. You had six bids on your 2022A. It was offered in the amount of $10,650,000. The six bids were separated by 10 basis points, or 1/10 of 1%. The best bid was 4.28%, and, and your highest bid was 4.38%, but the best bid was Hilltop Securities at 4.28%. And on your 2022Bs, oh, I should mention that on the, yes, on the 2022A, your $10 million offered was resized due to your receipt of a premium. So you actually, the par amount of your borrowing was $9.46 million. On the 2022Bs, you had five bidders. The true interest cost ranged from 3.58% to 4.05%. The best bid was FHN Financial Capital Markets at 3.58%, and that was in the amount of $3,635,000. So as you are probably aware by now, every year we're in the bond market, we meet with Moody's. Your staff does an excellent job of reviewing the financial information from Moody's so that they can assign a rating to the bonds that you're, that we're going out to bid on. They reaffirmed your AA2 rating on these bonds. And just a couple comments on that for perspective. Remember that AA2, there's only two steps to the best rating that can be achieved. AA1 is one more notch, and a AAA is prime investment category. Anything in the AA category, of which there are three, AA1, AA2, and AA3, those are high grade, those are identified as high-grade invest, as a high-grade investment category. When you go to the single A category, which is lower than yours, that's a medium-grade investment category. So a AA2 is, and the difference between a AA2 and one notch lower would cost you about a quarter of 1% today. So the difference is significant. And, and the difference is larger between the categories today than it was a year ago because the range of interest rates have grown significantly over the past year. So the AA2, the AA2 is an excellent rating. Moody's comments in its report about your strengths in this, in the rating report, your steady economic and tax-based growth supported by your local institutions, and your positive sales tax trends that aid in the maintenance of healthy fund balances and liquidities. You have a stable outlook moving forward, which means that they don't see any change in your rating over the next two-year horizon. So an excellent AA2 rating, an excellent rating. For the 2022 ANBs, the resolutions that are in your packet represent the best bids, and I'll just stand back for questions.
All right, any questions for Mr. Steinman? Mr. Weber, please.
Is it fair to say that this bond rating represents a national, highly recognized third-arm evaluation of our financial processes and our current economic health as a city?
I think that's a pretty good summary. Yes, Counselor.
Yeah, yeah. Well, congratulations to us. It's good news. Yeah, thanks.
Yes. Yeah, your AA2 came about in 2010, if I recall. It was AA3 from '05 to 2010, and then in 2010 you were upgraded to a AA2, so.
Dana, you probably should share that with Maureen, who will be.
She must have heard it.
All right, well, with that being said, any further questions or comments? Got a motion to approve President Sandy. Looking for a second, I see Mr. Weigle's hand, a second that. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries unanimously.
5.2, modifications to visitor grant force loan terms.
All right, I'll hand this back to you, Ms. Storsted. I know Ms. Rig is also in this, in attendance today, but if you want to kick it off and let us know what we're looking at here.
Yes, just a little history on this item. Back in 2020, when we were dealing with the impacts of the COVID pandemic, it hit the visitors industry quite hard between the hotel revenue that goes to this organization to fund the things they do to attract visitors. We did help with their cash flow with a $150,000 loan at the time to be paid back over a five-year term. They did make the first payment in 2021 for $30,000. I did include attached is just a look at the revenue stream between hotel and the motor vehicle rental tax that goes to fund their activities. And if you were to take a look at that, you can see how that decreased significantly from 20, in 2020. I think it's down, it was down about 45%. It is rebounding, but not quite to the pre-COVID levels in 2021. So there was a request to look at these terms. They also had some additional expenses that were unanticipated with their building, and there's quite a demand for their help to support events. With all that, a request came in to extend those loan terms over 10 years rather than five, with that next then $15,000 payment due 2023. So we bring that forward to you as a recommendation for approval.
Sounds good. Ms. Rig, if you want to just step, I just got one question I'll ask first, and then, I mean, this is more cash flow there. To me, it looks like that there's a tremendous amount of activity going on with events right now, which is causing more of a tightening of cash flow. So you want to keep those events going, and as such extending this helps you do that? Is that kind of a good synopsis?
Mayor Bocinski, members of council, yes. Events have come back full force, and we are operating in 2022 as we were pre-COVID, continuing with our marketing, our advertising, promoting our community. We don't want to make cuts to that. Coming back into 2022, definitely lodging taxes improving, occupancy is improving, but it was April when the border finally opened completely, so we're still not seeing that impact of the Canadian traffic yet. And we were hit, I think, with the perfect storm this year. We had a water pipe break outside the building, which caused our visitor center to flood. And while insurance is a great thing, they only cover the inside expenses, not the outside expenses. We're also dealing with seepage, you know, buildings getting older, so of course there's, there's costs that come with that. We had some major vandalism. Again, while insurance is great, doesn't cover everything, so we're dealing with a lot of additional expenses that relate more to our building and operations, and we don't want to stop doing what, doing our mission and fulfilling our mission. So this just helps us continue that.
Sounds good. Well, I'm glad you're asking to extend terms and not a loan forgiveness, and I'm sure Mr. Sandy agrees, so.
Well, I'll take that, if you want to.
Yeah, let's not put that on the table. I guess look for any comments from council at this point.
Move approval.
We got a motion to approve from Mr. Weigle and a second from Ms. Lunskey, so. Well done, Ms. Rig. I guess we'll find out here if it works. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
5.3, accept fiscal year 2022 COPS hiring program grant.
All right, did we have Deputy Chief Mackey in the house? So good, some more good news. Please, share.
Good evening, Mayor Bocinski and members of City Council. In June, I requested permission for the Police Department to apply for a Department of Justice COPS grant, allowing us to hire six officers at a pretty significant cost share with federal government. We recently learned that we were accepted for all six positions. Federal government authorized that, and so I request formal approval from the council to move forward with that and hire all six positions. I do stand ready to answer any questions regarding staffing studies, the cost share statistics, whatever you might need.
All right, any questions for Deputy Chief Mackey this evening? Yep, please, oh, sorry, what was that? Repeat. Yes, absolutely. Got a motion to approve from Ms. Oselsky, a second from Mr. Cavani. Might be your shortest appearance. Seeing no further comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion can air carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your support.
5.4, tech accelerator advisory board appointments.
All right, Ms. Richards, are you going to kick this one off for us, please?
Yes, as you may recall, in September, you approved an ordinance change to establish a tech accelerator advisory board. We're here tonight to get that kind of loaded with membership. It was an 11-member board. Six of those members are ex officio permanent. The other five are nominated by the mayor with council confirmation. Those five names, Josh Reedy, Frank Mattis, Blaine Christmas, Blaine Christman, excuse me, Tom Sawyer, and Mark Misbit, those are the mayor's nominees, and so we're here tonight to request your confirmation of that. Also like to take the opportunity to introduce you to Johnny Ryan, who was recently hired to be managing director of the Hive. He spoke to all these fine people and confirmed that they're willing to serve, and so I'd like to let Johnny just say a few words about what he's learned in the last few weeks on board and.
Yep, so, thank you for that, Meredith. My background, I actually made my way up to San Francisco and was working for one of the first, if not the first, tech accelerator probably in the world with rocket space technology. Learned a lot about just how the whole kind of real estate, elastic real estate in a, in a tech accelerator environment works, acceleration, VC funding, kind of collaboration, and also was teaching software engineering in a fast, high-paced, three-month boot camp kind of cohort design. And also set up, helped set up that environment inside of Target Corporate as well for their internal accelerator that they start pulling companies into. So in the first couple weeks of starting here, I've actually had a ton of interests in UAS, autonomous edge computing, kind of data processing companies. Right now, I have basically 100% confirmation from five UAS companies that are, they're ready to sign a lease before we can even offer them the lease. So we're just waiting back to hear back from EDA on our general lease approvals, and then we should have pretty good occupancy in the building come day one of opening. So that's kind of the short version of that. If anyone has any questions for me, feel free to ask or reach out anytime.
All right, sounds good. Any questions regarding the appointments or anything related to the building at this time for Mr. Ryan?
Move approval of your appointments, Mayor.
Got a motion approved from Mr. Weigle. Do we have a second? Got a second from President Sandy. All right, last chance to ask Mr. Ryan any questions or comments. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Richards and Mr. Ryan.
5.10, legislative priorities.
Thank you. Mr. Phelan, you were going to do some follow-up on this, so please let us know where you're at.
Mayor Bocinski and members of City Council, I think we'll start first. Maureen Storsted and Tangi Bovette, we've been, they've been working primarily on the March 20th. The interim committee did release a report out with a bill, and obviously that bill will go to the full legislative session. So we wanted to update you on that and what we're going to do on that first, and then we'll go to a couple other things that have come up since we last met two weeks ago.
All right, thank you, Mr. Phelan. Not too much to update here, but just quickly, a draft bill has come out of committee, and this would close the Andy Perez defined benefit pension plan, that would be for the main plan. And Tangi... And Tangi, Bovette, and myself, we do have a meeting scheduled for later this week with Andy Perez, Executive Director, just to go through the details of that bill and learn a little bit more about what's moving forward.
I think the, I think it's fair to say, if you look at the bill, we certainly hope it gets better by time final approval is, because I don't think it's going to put the city of Grand Forks, North Dakota State, and North Dakota in a position to be more competitive to attract and retain employees. So we are going to push that, not only with our own legislators, but we'll be down there to try to make that a better plan, and I think we can do that as we move forward. I also say regarding that interim committee, it was moved forward along party line, so that's a nine-three vote. But I think even what I've been told, even among those that voted in favor, that there was some open-mindedness, and they're going to move it forward, but they're, they know that they're going to get some further feedback on the plan, and I think it'll get better as a session goes along. The second item that came up is we, I had some discussions this morning with Council Member Osowski regarding the behavioral health. And what's attached to the agenda item tonight is I had asked Mr. Doolittle some questions regarding the behavioral health plan. One of those questions is, does state supported this concept that he briefed you on? The answer is yes. The question is, will the county be involved with us as a partner with the city government? I think the answer is yes. Are, is there any local funding that's going to be part of this, both short, mid, and long term? And the answer is no. And so those are the answers that I asked to be answered, because I know those are some of the, was on the burning minds. The other thing that was attached to this, there's two links. One is this, the Schulte Report, and the Schulte Report, as Council Member Weber has really been part of, that was a state-sponsored study about how do we move forward in a better way on behavioral health. And there's, there's a few recommendations, you know, we need a renewed state hospital, we need more coordination, various things, we need to be less siloed. So there's a report that's attached as a link on there. The other thing, Council Member Osowski and I, we talked about is the community health needs assessment, and that happens periodically, and there are some findings on that. And so right now, I would hand it over to Council Member Osowski, and I also briefed Mr. Doolittle that on this particular item that we'd be available to further have further discussions, and I know Council Member Osowski had some further thoughts on our initiative.
All right, yeah, Ms. Osowski, please.
Okay. I guess my thoughts were, I did go through this report, which was submitted by UND, actually. Just to bring this to the attention of everybody, there was a very small amount of people that were actually surveyed for this report. It was under 400. A majority of those people were middle-aged white women who make six figures. And so I don't really think that a lot of the data that was collected in this is actually a fair representation of our community. Also, there were a lot of things brought up by those people about equality and diversity, and I don't know if really white women can speak to that, but one thing that I did look at is we have an obesity problem here in our county. I did do some research, and I found on the NIH website that obesity is really correlated with people's behavioral health. They say that if you are obese, that you have a 25% more chance of having anxiety and mental issues, also a 25% more chance of having addiction issues. I really would like to see the Department of Health put, like, put more emphasis on just healthy living, on exercising, on eating properly, and those are things that we can do right now. We don't need state funding to promote healthy living in our community. And, you know, some of the requests for the state legislator, you know, are like more beds and things like that, and it's going to take years to get there. So I think really, in the meantime, we should be focusing on people's more physical health and promoting those. And we can, we can do that without, you know, in the schools, we can do that going around. You go around and you see COVID-19 posters and promoting the vaccine, but you don't see anywhere on posters on whether or not you got your exercise for the day. And so I just really think that the Department of Health should be pushing these kinds of healthy livings, and maybe we can make an impact now instead of waiting for a couple of years till we receive funding from the state.
So, okay, if I respond?
Yes, sir.
So, Council Member Osowski, members of the council, so just to give you a heads up on some of the work that is happening in that respect, one thing that I think is important to discuss is the Blue Zones Initiative. So previously, Altrue had come to the council with the Blue Zones Initiative, asking for funding for that project. Ultimately, the decision was made to not fund that project, but Altrue has gone out and funded the project themselves specifically for part of the community on the north side, including, I think, all of your ward, as well as a little bit of Ward One and Ward Three. So the Blue Zones, the Blue Zones Project is moving forward. They have their staffing hired, they're doing their initial reporting work. And part of Blue Zones is, there's a lot of health promotion pieces as part of Blue Zones, as well as, as well as health promotion pieces and, you know, making good choices when you're, when you're going out to eat, you know, built environment, things like that, that are also incorporated in that. And so that is going to be a good opportunity to see how, how that type of programming is, is going to impact the community. And Grand Forks Public Health was involved in both the selection of the part of the community for this project, as well as we are staying in close contact with the Blue Zones Committee as part of, or as they're moving forward. Some other pieces I wanted to, you know, make sure you're aware of. We do have a dietitian on staff at Grand Forks Public Health that is able to do some health promotion work, and she is on Live Well Grand Cities, which is a community group that's focused on health promotion as well. And so we do have representation there. They have pursued a lot of grants in the past, including things like, you know, the bike share program, programs like that, that are really good health promotion opportunities. And we do have a very robust, you know, park system and things like that in the community, as well as the Greenway, you know, that provide opportunity for people to go out and move. The piece that's really challenging with health promotion is it costs a lot of money for a small return on investment versus, you know, that investment happens over a long period of time with health promotion. You know, right now, we're, you know, going back to 2013, when Altrue did the first community health needs assessment, behavioral health has been, you know, top of mind each of those years. So we're at almost 10 years now, where behavioral health has been a highly, a high priority, as well as there's been a significant amount of state data regarding the concerns for behavioral health. And when it comes up in, when it comes up in political discussions that, you know, political campaigns are bringing up behavioral health, behavioral health. So, you know, we did feel like this was an area where it does make sense as an extension of a lot of the work that's already going on with Grand Forks Public Health to, you know, to wade into addressing some of the treatment and recovery needs for the community.
I do see on page 80, and it carries over to 81, that there are the focus group listed off 35 different resources that are available to, you know, help citizens with the different issues, the syringe program, the North Dakota Department of Health, Northeast Human Services. How many more resources do we need to get this problem under control?
Council Member Osowski, there's, you know, each of these programs is addressing a specific area, you know, and that's always a challenge in, you know, behavioral health or any type of a human service profession. That's always, you know, kind of brought up in meetings, like, you know, why are we so siloed, things of that nature. You know, what this, what this initiative is looking at is, you know, it's primarily looking to work with one organization to add some vertical integration to how they're providing behavioral health. So then hopefully, there's fewer, there's fewer opportunities where someone might get dropped along the way. And when someone ends up getting dropped along the way, they end up ultimately, you know, in many cases, ultimately ending up in higher-cost services, whether that's acute care hospital stays, whether that's, you know, being arrested and being incarcerated, you know, whether that's multiple ER visits, things like that. So, you know, we're trying to, you know, start that move back upstream. You know, I know we, you know, in public health, we wish we could go all the way upstream, but, you know, it's a long walk to get there. So we are working on that with this initiative.
Okay. Thank you.
The next.
Thank you, Mr. Doolittle.
Yep. And thank you. I think if you look at that health report, it's generally positive. And so if you look at between 19 and 22, if you take some time, look at that link, I think a lot of our scores have gotten better. I think the one area that Ms. Osowski pointed out was in the physical health, and I think what she's saying is some of that, I'm sure, is attributed to the pandemic and people not getting out. So if we can focus on that as part of the blue zone and spread that through the city, I think is a big deal as we move forward. The other thing that came up was the inner-city bridge, and we did not put the inner-city bridge in. I know.
I'm sorry, before we leave the behavioral health issue, can I make a request?
Yeah.
Chief Nelson, would you be willing to come forward and discuss behavioral health issues in our community and your, I believe, your support for what Mr. Doolittle is proposing?
I'm sorry, Mayor, can we put this on the committee of the whole agenda?
Yeah.
And, because we're trying to deal with legislative issues here.
I think, yeah, for tonight, I mean, we're got, if you want to do briefly, I mean, we're really talking about one paragraph of legislative priorities and as we move forward. So if you want to just do something quick and then we, I mean, this is a much broader subject, but today, we're just honing in if we want to make changes on this actual document. So if you could give us a kind of a quick answer, maybe let us know that you're supportive of that, and then we'll.
Absolutely. Obviously not prepared with stats, and I know you're a data guy, but I will tell you this anecdotally, that we are dealing with a large amount of mental health issues, which puts our officers in a position that technically they're not the best options to be handling the mental health. And the issue that we have is that we serve as a gateway into the mental health system, so a lot of times our officers deal with individuals, identify an issue, but then it kind of stops because there's no backend services to be offered. So in a nutshell, you know, prime example, I think Saturday, we had, it was like, I think, eight suicidal ideation calls in one day, and that's not uncommon, to be honest with you. So thank goodness they're not completions, but again, that's just one, one hope. And the hope is, the bigger bang for the buck would be this. We're 4% above the calls for service that we had last year. We're seeing a large increase in welfare checks, mental health, suicidal ideation, a lot of them with the same repeat people. I would honestly think it's cheaper to get the help on the backend, so I don't have to come up here in front of you and say, calls for service are up this much, I need X number more officers in order to handle all these calls for service. If you were to be able to get these people the help, because police aren't the best equipped, but they're the first call when someone's in crisis. So in a nutshell, that's what I can give you.
Thanks, and I don't mean to drag this out, but hopefully just a yes/no answer, Chief, if you would. Do we currently have enough services to meet the behavioral health needs of the population at this time?
No.
Thanks.
All right. Mr. Phelan, if we can work our way through here.
Yeah, inner-city bridge, that was brought up, and we continue to recommend that it doesn't get added on. You are going to see at the next committee of the whole, you're going to see an agreement come forward for $151,000 for SRF, which is an engineering consulting firm, to start the process of narrowing down the inner-city bridge issue, and number two, to further examine the Maryfield Bridge. So they're both on there. So I'm engaged with the city of East Grand Forks in both counties, of Polk and Grand Forks County, in trying to share those costs. What I'm saying is this first $151,000 with SRF is really preliminary planning. And so it's, if, if we're going to the legislature this session here in the next couple of months, we really don't have a project per se, and so that's why I'm recommending that project to include the Maryfield would happen at some point in the future, not this upcoming session, because we're just starting to look at things preliminarily. You'll see that next, you'll see that next Monday, but the study you're going to see is not anywhere near final design and that sort of thing. So that's the issue on the bridge. I would also finally recommend that you add the children's museum, as you know, tonight, even though we are the entity, the city of Grand Forks, that received the planning level grant from the Department of Commerce and the EDA, the US EDA. So I would recommend that gets placed on our, on our agenda, because we're going to be, we're going to be kind of the conduit that will move that project forward. So that would be the one addition I would request. Otherwise, I'd ask you to move forward with those priorities.
All right, thank you, Mr. Phelan. Open up, anybody has any further comments on this? And as we get into session, as things come up, there'll certainly be more, more discussions as we get into January. Appreciate the work Mr. Weber's done, and Mr. Veen as well. Mr. Veen?
Yeah, Mr. Phelan, I wanted to go back to the SRF. The $151,000, is that for the next long-range transportation plan?
No, Mayor Bocinski and Council Member Veen, no. The, there was a selection panel made up of all those various entities I just noted. They did choose SRF as the, we'll call it the Bridges Consultant.
Okay.
And so even though they've been working on the, I'm sure they've been working on various plans with the, with the both cities and counties, I think that probably played into their, hey, we're on top of this item. So it is a same firm, but regarding the bridge issue.
And so the idea here is that that, they're going to try to get through the details of how we, as two communities, bring the project forward, is that right?
They are, yep. And they've set it up in a multi-phased approach. The first phase is really figure out kind of where we're at, where we're going, funding opportunities, some planning level activities. And so once you get through that part of it, probably by next summer, you would then move forward to the next phase in more detail. So I think we're a ways off of really pointing to the North Dakota DOT that we're ready for funding, we're ready to go. We're, we're a ways off, and we're not going to be, have anybody be, be able to be at a podium to really provide a really good story that we're ready to go.
Yeah, and I think in addition to that, the other issue that is happening is we'll be doing the next five-year transportation plan that was coming up. I think there was an open house last week in East Grand Forks, which we weren't able to announce because we, we quit earlier, we adjourned early. But, yeah, I mean, I have mixed emotions about that, to be honest with you, because it's, it's in our current plan to move it forward.
I see these priorities. We have lots, Council Member Veen, and we have lots of plans, but we, what we put on the list is projects that we can execute. And we can, good faith, can say, hey, we need final design monies, because we're ready to go bid this project. And we just can't say that with either the Maryfield Bridge or the inner-city bridge.
Now, the Maryfield Bridge isn't, is outside of our jurisdiction anyway.
Yes.
So the, really, the one that we, we look at is what's going to happen on the inner-city bridge, not even saying a location at this point, but the inner-city bridge.
So with that, I'd ask, approve the priorities with the children's museum.
And where would we put the children's museum? Thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Be under, I think we've got that under economic, it's in the, the further you add it, it's, you probably should add, if you're going to prove it, add it under a bullet here, under the, you know, the bullet they used to.
It's a separate item. I think it's a separate quality of life item that I would add as a separate item.
Under economic development, right?
Yeah.
And that's what you got.
Yes.
Okay, good, good. All right, even any further comments on the city of Grand Forks state legislative priorities as of now?
I want to approve the addition of children's museum.
All right, we got a motion approved from President Sandy. Do we have a second?
Aye.
Got a second, I believe that was Mr. Weigl. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Five point 11, department head classification matter.
All right, I know this was one from the committee of the whole. Again, I think there's been a lot of focus on the termination side of this. You know, we're in a place right now, we've got about 50% of our department heads are on contract, about 50% are classified. It's kind of gone back and forth over the years. I think it'd be great to get some continuity and some, you know, going forward, a better ordinance that really clears it up. I think it's been drafted pretty well by the city attorney. We're going to have, obviously, a couple of positions coming up, and we need sort of every available opportunity to negotiate and to offer benefits to get, to fill those roles, whether it's internal or whether it's external. So again, I continue to support the. So again, I continue to support the draft as is, but certainly want to open up the discussion. This is the first reading of that ordinance. So open up to council for their thoughts.
I'm going to approve.
We got a motion to approve and a second from Ms. Osowski. So we got a motion and a second. So with that, I will open it up to further comment.
Sure.
Yeah, Mr. Veen, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. There's, there's a number of parts of this, as I recall, if we're going through. We are going to be changing the definition of a department head, right?
I think if, you want to, who wants to take this? You want to be?
Go ahead.
Why don't you take that, Mr. Gostad, so you can, on the ordinance side?
It's Section 3 of the ordinance. It removes the language of certain departments, because you specified department heads, and some of them don't exist anymore, so we're removing language that seems to be unnecessary and clarifying that a department head is anybody that's appointed to have ultimate responsibility for the operation of a department.
Yeah, so it's giving a definition. I don't know whether it was there before, but you, you've defined it, and then you, you're removing also that, the identification of individual department heads too, right?
Yeah, because there is, within that classification, the language that has been deleted. There are some that are enumerated in that list that don't exist anymore. And so if you're in charge of a department, then you are a department head through this new, through the definition.
But, yeah, so you have a definition, and you're not identifying in any individuals anymore?
Any, any, correct. I'm sorry, there is no particular position identified as being a quote department head.
Correct. And then the third thing I was thinking of, it is requiring all department heads to be transitioning, if they're not now those positions, if they ever filled again, that we would then do what the mayor has said, is have all department heads will be contracted.
Correct. The, those that are currently in the classified position will maintain their classified position, and then, once that individual moves on, then the replacement would be under the contract.
And then it does impact, I think the mayor mentioned this a little bit, the hiring and the disciplinary and dismissal process, right? From what currently exists for...
It would change it for the, roughly half that is civil service. It'd be the same for the ones that, you know, currently are contracted to, as, if you want to review how that's stated, Mr. Gostad.
Yeah, the way it, way it sets up is, is that the department heads are no longer, you know, would no longer be in the classified position, and they'd be under contract, and that would, that, there's two parts to that. One is, I guess one part, Section 4 talks about who's class, who's the non-classified position, and we've added now all department heads that we've defined above would be, would be non-classified, except those that, on the date the ordinance is adopted, would continue to maintain their classified position, those that have that.
And so I don't know if it'd be, who, Mr. Phelan, what's the difference in the hiring process between either of these?
Sure. Well, right now, we, we've advertised both the city assessor position and also the public health director position. We've, we're advertising in a parallel position, so as a civil service or a contracted employee. And so it's going to be a very similar process. One of the things that's different under the civil service process, you would have a civil service commissioner, make sure they're involved. Ultimately, the civil service commission sets the number of candidates, usually one to three candidates, that are sent to the mayor for, for approval. I think in this case, you're going to have a similar body that's going to review. I suspect we'd have city council members, whether it's a civil service employee or a contracted benefitted position. We have, in this position, these two positions, we likely have a civil service commissioner, and we'd also have a city council member to be part of the process, just so that we remain balanced as we move forward. Ultimately, if it's a contracted benefitted position, you're going to see just the one candidate in the, with the agreement, and that's what you're going to approve from city council. Under a civil service process, you may, we may have a city council member a part of the process, but you will, the city council will not have any final approval of whomever the final candidate is.
So roughly, it's, it's like a third-party person, but it's a city council member, is that what you're saying?
Yes, yeah.
And, and that's inclusive in both the hiring and the dismissal process?
I think what the dismissal is handled, under a civil service process, it's handled through the Civil Service Code. And so oftentimes, if it's a department head, the mayor is ultimately the, the next in line, so the mayor makes, if he makes a disciplinary action...
Right.
The mayor sends that, would send that department head a letter saying that, for these reasons, I'm going to seek this disciplinary action against you. You have the right to appeal to the, to the civil service commission as, within an X amount of days. And then at that point, and I've been here, you know, for a couple of decades, so I've seen a, a series of civil service hearings on employment matters, department heads and otherwise, there would be kind of a quasi-hearing, generally in city council, where the employee would have, is generally represented by legal counsel, and obviously the city will, would be represented at that civil service. There's five civil service commissioners that would hear the case, ultimately would make a final determination of whether the city administration had enough evidence, made the right decision based upon whatever the legal criteria is. I think the difference in, and Councilmember Veen and I talked a bit about this this morning, with a department head that's contracted, what the code is saying is that, if the mayor, in a similar version, terminates, and he has to notify you as city council. And then once, within that specified time period, and then the city council can make a determination if they want to take up that issue. And so really, you are the, you are the board that's going to hear something from a contracted benefitted department head. That's going to be in your realm, and where you can, you can make a, you know, a decision of whether you want to pick up the issue, because there's something that's... So I think what, under both processes, they're open to the public, and as, as famously said, sunlight is a, is a really great disinfectant. And so whether the department head is civil service and we don't do something right, there's going to be a board and a public meeting that's going to review it. So we're going to have to make sure that we've done all the things that we need to do. And with a contracted department head, we're going to end up here. And if we don't have good answers about how we handle this situation, in that case, it's even going to be in front of the cameras. And so I think the burden is high, and I know there's concerns about, there's not issues now with our city council, there's not issues with our mayor, and perhaps there's not issues with your city minister and being myself. Things could change. But I think what you have in place here is whatever happens and whomever's here, they're going to have to answer to the public in both ways. And I think right now, as the mayor has said, the contracted benefitted department gives us more flexibility with challenges of hiring folks. We can be more adaptive with employees that, whether they're within the city employment or outside. I think it's just a, a better way for us to do it. And I think in both cases, the employee will be protected if something is a fall.
Mr. Phelan, I got one question. Would this, I mean, looking at the, the code and how we have some identified, some not identified in the current code, which should be changing, would this, and maybe if this is Mr. Gostad, current city department heads that are contracted, would this add some additional protection for them, for them that might not currently be there?
The way, I actually think that for those that are under contract, the department heads that are under contract right now, the way I've, it's the Section 3-0203, right now it says, "Any appointed official," and I've interpreted that to mean department heads, because they are appointed. So I think that, and what I've done is added clarification to make it clear that a department head falls within that, within that ordinance, which requires the mayor to come forward with the reasons within the window of five or 15 days to explain the rationale, and to file that statement with the city auditors, and, and then the city council can, by majority vote, reinstate that department head or that appointed official, is the way it's set up. So I think actually, the, the way I've interpreted that ordinance, I think contracted employees are still probably covered, or would be covered under this ordinance. I've just made some clarifying language to make it, you know, very clear that a department head falls within that, within that ordinance, so that there's clarity going forward in case somebody else sits here and makes a different interpretation. The one thing I do want to add to Councilmember Veen's question, there was a memo that's part of the agenda item that we prepared back in October of 2020, that kind of gives you a bullet point process for the hiring process under a classified employee, and also the discipline and termination. It's just in a very, you know, bullet point fashion, so you can kind of see the difference in, in that regard.
I would say one more thing is that, you know, certainly, we're the administration. We, we are to execute what the city, city council wants, right? And so that's the, what we're here for. So in the future, if there's something, whatever administration's here has done something that you don't agree with, you guys are in charge of changing the rules. And so the obligation that we have is to make sure that we really execute quite well, because at the end of the day, you can change of how we administer, and we have to comply with that. So I think right now we have a team that's going to comply with everything you want as the board of directors and city council.
All right. And then, I guess to be clear, we got a handful of department heads, this does not affect outside department heads, the rest of the 580 roughly employees would be as they currently are outside of that, under the civil service. So plenty of work still for the civil service commission to do.
You have about 14 department heads, plus or minus one. So that, those are the people we're talking about with these, with, when I say contracted department heads.
All right, anything further from council for the first reading, and then we'll get another whack at this in two weeks? All right, seeing none, we got a motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
That motion carries, I believe that was, we have six to one with Mr. Weber dissenting. Moving on to six information items.
6.1, statement that changes on cash balance as of August 31st.
Thank you. And on to seven, approval of minutes and bills.
7.1 is your vendor's list and engineer's estimate.
Get a motion to approve the vendor list and engineer's estimate. We got a motion from Mr. Weigl. We have a second.
Second.
A second from Mr. Veen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Vendor list and engineer's estimate is approved through that motion.
And 7.2 is your minutes for May 16th, and we'll try to get additional minutes on here for next meeting.
Thank you, Maureen. Get a motion to approve the minutes. Got a motion from, again, from Mr. Weigl, second from Mr. Weber. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries unanimously. City administrative comments, Mr. Phelan, any comments this evening?
No, thanks.
All right, move on to nine, mayor and city council member comments. Mr. Weigl, any comments this evening?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Osowski, any comments?
I'm not sure.
Thank you, Mr., Ms. Lonsky, any comments?
Yes, I wanted to invite everyone. Mr. Weber and I are having a dance-off on November 16th at 6:00 p.m. at Phoenix, also known as a ward meeting, so hope to see you there.
Nice, I have a, a feeling you're going to be able to beat Mr. Weber. He's really good, but he can't turn left, so he'll be good to go. He's got no left foot. All right. Mr. Cavami, any comments this evening?
No, thank you.
All right, Mr. Veen, any comments? All right, we got just Vice President Weber.
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Seeing none, Mr. Sandy has left, so we'll leave it at that.
I'll move to adjourn.
I got, oh, the mayor's comments.
Oh, I'm sorry, sir. Yes, of course. Great.
I'll second his motion.
Just want to, that's, don't make me bang the gavel, that's out of order, Mr. Weber, but just a few comments, just want to thank the, the city staff for the leaf pickup, they did a, a great job, and now heading right into, to street maintenance and street cleanup, so it's going to be a slog. It's luckily a little bit later this year, but winters can, can be certainly long here, so appreciate the work. And once again, thanks, thanks to the council, thanks for the attendance, and Ms. Moore's fourth-grade class for putting a smile on our face to start off the meeting. So with that, I'd be looking for a, a motion to adjourn on our item 10. Got a motion from Mr. Weber, Vice President Weber, second from Mr. Weigl. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned.[1783.78][1783.78]